We'll call it where the regularly scheduled meeting of the school board. First item on the agenda is approval of the school board minutes from October 12th. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Is there any? Any suggestions? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and tensions?
Same.
Oh, Brian is gay. And that much it cares. Next up is the educational focus and looks like we have a presentation on the Boys and Girls of Summer.
We wanted to be first. This one's not messing around. And we won't take up a lot of your time, but we're excited to be here tonight. I brought some books that are just like sampling the books that we've read over the years. So I'll start those there. It's certainly not all of them, but I know Ms. O'Connor really would like to get her hands on. But thank you for having us. We have been doing Boys and Girls of Summer for a number of years now.
Eight, eight years with Boys of Summer and? Like eighteen or?
Yeah, six, seven, sixteen. It's been a long time. And every year it gets a little bit better. And so this summer was awesome because we got to return to our overnight for the Girls of Summer. We did Lafayette Ridge, which is getting harder and harder as I get older and older. And the thing is, the girls just get faster. And so Ms. Steve and I, we had a great time. We had five girls on the overnight, but on our day hikes, we had anywhere from six to 12 on a busy day.
The boys did not do an overnight. We didn't have the numbers this year. And we had between two and seven on our hikes. And we have done overnight in the past, not quite like the girls. We go like in Lafayette Campground and hike the ridge and then come down and stay down there. Boys are a little different than the girls. And sometimes not as tough, but we're getting there. And in the past, we've also read, given them a choice of reading some books and then we have a campfire talk. And Mr. Quinn has also done Boys of Summer meeting for several years. And it's a, it's a great, great program and we really appreciate this. So I said, oh, let's show us, show some slides from this past summer and kind of show you what we did. There's some other things that we did, but this is a good part. So unless you want to add to it, well.
No, I figured we could show them this and then if anybody has any questions or Hazel is one of our Girls of Summer, she might like to say, we can wait till after the slideshow Hazel. We do our hikes separately for the most part, but we do join up and do one together, Vasco's.
I think we've been doing that for four years. Have you stayed at Liberty Springs or you stayed at?
We did. We stayed at Liberty Springs. The hut would be awesome. The huts are just so expensive.
Oh, yes.
But we did do Liberty Springs and it was, it was awesome. There were, um. Yeah, there was a, again, there, so it's interesting like what the, what hiking has become here in the whites. We obviously chose a very popular hike. However, there were camps that day that brought 70 students along the ridge. And it made the ridge look like a mall in some ways. It was bizarre. So we had some interesting conversations with the girls about, you know, is that ethical hiking? Like, I don't know if it is. We always try to do less than 10 when we do a hike like that. But it was unbelievably these big summer camps that were just like a counselor in the back and one in the front. And they were just like as far as the eye could see, people. It was crazy. Sorry. Hazel, was there anything that you'd like to share? You like hiking? And so maybe could you just share with them one thing about the multi-age, like the fact that?
It was cool because like I wasn't really immune to older kids. It might be.
Yeah, and there's a wide range between from seventh grade to seniors in high school. So it's one of the things that Ms. Steve and I love about that program because it does sort of inherently develop some leadership skills amongst the younger ones too. You know, as they see the older girls, although I think our younger ones were tougher in many ways than some of our older ones this year. They just never got tired, you know, in their packs. We, it was like half of their body weight, some of them. I felt like their overnight packs. It's crazy.
This was the first year we had middle school. We went down to seventh grade with the boys and we had some of them join as well. That was a different experience for sure.
Other, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, after you get done doing all of your hikes for the summer, do you sit down and take some of your writings and put them all together or publish something?
Great question, Dr. Mann. Yes, we historically, we have done that. The last two years, it has been really difficult to actually create the anthology. And it was a goal this summer to get the girls writing to me by August 5th so that I could do it before school starts. Because once school starts, it's just, I just, I can't do it. And so that's been the thing the last two years. We haven't, we haven't gone that extra step. But I have high hopes. Next year, maybe we'll do a compilation. Well, and the girls are actually really good at that stuff, so I should have them do it and not me. But we do, we try to make an anthology and we just publish it under like Shutterfly. And so for years we just.
Five or six of them.
Yeah. But I, we don't point out the one, you know. But yes, we, we don't, yeah, they do writing on all of our hikes unless it's raining or with it or when we're with the boys. We don't write when we're with the boys because they don't write. So we just take that off.
They only like to do one hike for us.
It's true. But it is a dynamic hike when we, it's very different and they don't, you know, they act so differently sometimes in the woods than they ever would act in our classrooms. So it is a.
When, Ms. Watts, when you do your, when you have your campfires? I'm just remembering one time when you did a presentation, you guys talked about the campfires.
Yeah, when, well, we didn't do an overnight this year, but when we have in the past, they've been incredible because we, each, each student would pick a book about a male and, and they would share the story. And it was lots of different angles of what they're interested in. And we have a wide variety of students that, that joined. So that was really neat. Like it would last like two hours.
Yeah. And their personalities came out because you were talking about how they.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah. And their interests and, you know, it's, it's going to really, that's been a good part. And unfortunately that didn't happen this year, but something that I'd like to have happen. Put back the pizza in there on this road.
That was their end of season.
So we, we, I wanted to be transparent, like that was Merrill Lake. And we've done a cookout there before and we had hiked Walton Dicky and we're trying to figure out like, you know, work schedules and all this. And I didn't really want to bring the younger kids camping with the older boys. And the older boys had zero experience. And I wasn't comfortable taking them in, you know, overnight. So I made that decision. So, you know, for their safety, emotional safety with their kids and everything. So, but that pizza at Merrill Lake was awesome. And the year before, we had a, a cookout, but Dev doesn't eat meat. So it was a meatless cookout, which was like all veggie burgers and different stuff. And this year when Dev was there, he had this treat that was like, I forget what it was called, but it was pretty good. But it's like in this big Tupperware container. And we hiked all the way through, you know, he's had this big backpack and he was like over paired. And he carried it all the way up and over Walton Dicky and then shared it with us at Merrill Lake. I'm like. I didn't think of it. Explain why it's warm.
I was really hoping Seth Sealy could be there. He's a sophomore and it was really, it was, he was awesome that day. We hiked with him, but this fall, when we returned to school, he wrote a personal narrative about how doing Boys of Summer changed his mindset about what kind of student he wanted to be. And his, his, his year, he's had a phenomenal sophomore year so far and it just showed his maturity.
It's been nice to, to talk with the kids on the trail. Mr. Quinn was great. You know, because he, he'd talk about college stuff with the kids and everything. And they'd get, they'd ask lots of different questions about a lot of different things. It's just a, it was a good experience.
Very good.
Thank you for what you do.
Absolutely. Fantastic.
Thanks for supporting him.
Of course.
Thank you for coming in and sharing.
Yeah, absolutely. Hazel, what's your favorite thing to eat in the woods when we cook?
What was it?
In the woods? In the woods, like, like when we, when we are snacking or when we're having lunch. We always share like, what's our lunch? Because it's important to know what people are eating. What's your favorite in the woods snack?
Boys like beef jerky.
Kelly, who chooses the books? Do they each choose their own book to read or do you all read the same one? We, we all read the same one in Girls of Summer. We have our beginner book, which everyone who's new has to read. And that's called Up: A Mother-Daughter Peak-Fagging Adventure. So everybody reads that because it's like a, this, this mom hiked all the 4,000 footers with her five-year-olds. And she was, she was homeschooled and she had time. But she wrote this really great book on things to like consider. So we think it's a good primer for girls who've never hiked before. And then we look for new books, like we're going to repeat a book next year. Becoming Odessa, who she set the, the record for hiking the Appalachian Trail. And that's a great book. Jennifer Farvathis. It's fun that her maiden name is Far, but it's like, yeah, kind of far, but she hikes so far. All right, I want to stop talking.
Didn't the mother and daughter come to the Lincoln Library?
They did. Yeah, yeah. I think both daughters. I know, and one daughter liked to hike and the other one didn't. It's fascinating. I have one of those too.
It just seems like such a great opportunity for, you know, people that live here to get out in an environment that they might not get into, right? And be in a comfortable experience with people they know and other students to, to learn being out on the trail and in the wilderness. I think that's, I think we. Easy it is to get in the woods, but not being prepared or not knowing what to do and having some guidance to do that.
And we do have some families who don't, who don't hike here. And it's been, you know, we, we had a, we had a new student this year who, who hiked some, but not like our kind of hiking. So like the first hike, she didn't bring any water or any snacks. And she was wearing jeans and a heavy sweatshirt. So we had to go to the little boutique that we have at school to find like a t-shirt and basically lay the law down that unless you have water, we always bring extra snacks. But you, it's not safe to hike on a 85-degree day without water. You won't be allowed to come. And she was like, what? But that's, you know, part of the, like, understanding the risk and the reward of hiking in these towns.
Or they drink their water in the first half an hour. On the first hike and that's, that's happened as well. You don't get an opportunity to learn those in a comfortable environment. You know, it's normally.
That's our bus.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Hazel, what did you do?
Ouch.
This spring?
Yeah, we didn't have it for the last couple of weeks in the season, soccer season.
I hope it heals quickly.
Thank you.
No, Sharon, I didn't take any books.
All right. So next, next up on the agenda is communication and correspondence. And I did not receive that.
Yeah, that's been requested.
Oh. Right, thanks.
Let's see if we can do anything else all of a sudden.
In a minute.
Let's look at what in a minute.
It doesn't matter. I would give it.
Yeah.
So it didn't come up.
Yeah, no.
Oh, yeah. No, I will. Yeah.
I don't know where that helped one.
I will, no, I will. So we do have, we did get correspondence, but it will be addressed in the public. Business administrator's report.
Yeah, just a couple of things manifest right there. It's tax rate setting season and as we're usually meet with DRA to go through our revenues and everything, our estimated revenues for the new year that affects the tax rates, the taxes collected from each town, for the school. One of the things that came through this year wasn't huge, but for our, our district, at the end of last year, there was a health bill and I forget the number of it. But the, for the New Hampshire retirement, the state was picking up seven and a half percent of the, what the employer paid during last year and was going to refund that basically to the districts or to the town. So we got an additional like $47,000 in our taxes collected that will, that actually will go through the tax rate setting sessions with each town. So that was just additional revenues we weren't anticipating. The last two days, I've been at the NHSA Best Practices Conference for Finance and Operations, which has been really good. A lot of relevant topics going on. One of the sessions I sat in on, and I'm going to put this in your packet next time, was on adequate education and the formula. It's, it's a good review for everyone. And it was a change. Of course, there's a few things that changed this year, but the towns, the town of Lincoln and Woodstock are getting additional money. Now, the town of Lincoln has never received a grant, the state education grant before. Every town, and what we'll do is help reduce the tax, the education tax for just one year. It's a one year. It's called the SWEAP Reduction Hold Harmless Grant. I can go over that with you next time because they basically reduce one piece of the formula and then passing out the extra money, I guess, to the town. So again, like towns like Lincoln that never gets a, an education grant is getting money this year. And you'll see, the town should see a reduction in their education tax rate into one time. So it's, it's, it's kind of confusing. It's nice. It's confusing. People are going to go, next year we'll see it, you know, an increase or it'll be back to what it normally is. But I will go through all those numbers because I was kind of waiting to see the tax rate sheets from the towns too, to see really what that effect is. But, and again, I'll pass out this packet that goes through the whole formula. And that's it. I know I get so excited by this stuff. These guys, they get so excited by this.
Did the audit finish up?
Yeah, the audit, the auditors are not in the office anymore. I haven't heard a whole lot. There's a few lingering things, but everything was fine. I mean, they were. So we should hopefully be getting a preliminary report soon. We do have another audit coming up in November. It's a federal compliance audit. We had a small one in the spring on just the ESSR funds, but this is a bigger one. They're hitting every district in the state where actually they've been doing this for the past five years. We're, they're in year five of these, so we're one of the last remaining districts that they haven't come out to. But it's really just going through process and procedures and policies as it relates to grants and, you know, procurement time and effort, which is payroll and just all the documents and supporting information. So I heard it's somewhat intense, but we'll go through that in November.
Yeah.
Just a very busy time of year for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Deb. Doctor.
Okay, so let's see. We have, just to remind the board that after this meeting is complete, you'll have a non-meeting so we could talk about negotiations and get some ideas tomorrow. There is a negotiation session. So just need some input from the board. Where you guys are going with that. And the funding formula committee did meet or is meeting on, oh, they did meet on October 19th. So you will be getting the minutes to that in the next packet. It's not in this packet. It's very interesting. I didn't know if you wanted to expound on that.
A lot of discussion. A lot of discussion. Lot of good points made, you know, some different percentage figures and stuff thrown around. And Cheryl Bearden, who is the Selectmen's Representative from Woodstock on the committee, made some great spreadsheets. She's talented with that stuff. But I don't have any of that with me, so I don't want to quote anything of it. I couldn't, I make sure I put my stuff, my folder with me next, next meeting.
Well, this committee met on October 20th. Those minutes will be in the next packet. Your risk management had a meeting on October 24th and those will be in the next packet as well. The professional development committee will be meeting on November 1st, just next Tuesday. So we'll have an update on you in your next packet. Let's see. The elementary school is moving forward with the working on the analysis of the student data. That's a continuation from last year and then just moving forward. They have this past summer, they did the elementary, a elementary group of teachers to get together in, in review the standards for all the academic areas as well as the competencies. And they created documents for that and they will be moving forward with working on the standards and the competencies throughout. The middle school is moving forward with the student data as well. So they will be starting the demonstrated success of support. Looked different, you know, than the elementary, obviously, but, but they're looking at the standards and the competencies as well for that. We have, American Education Week is coming up on November 14th through the 18th. And the PR conferences are that week on November 16th, that Wednesday. And also for anyone who's just not aware, there is a ceremony of veterans on veteran, November 10th, the day before Veterans Day, at nine o'clock in the high school gym. And public is welcome and all veterans are invited as well. And okay, so, so the board will be, that last sentence on that page does not make any sense at all. The board will need to vote on the policies in the first reading. And they'll be, that will be going to the second reading. And there is one policy that was currently in second.
Yeah.
So the board will need to vote to approve that policy. That's EAJB. Just one week. It was a tagline. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I just want to thank the PD for coming in in the morning, helping out with drop off. I know they're busy, so they try to be here all the time. And also want to, you know, give some appreciation to our staff who are truly busy working with students, not only with, you know, academic stuff, but, you know, teaching each other how to respect each other, having good conversations, keeping their hands to themselves, those kind of things. And to show appreciation, not only towards the people who are supporting them, but to, to each other as kids too. So the teachers do a tremendous amount of work with that. We need to know that they're not only working with kids academically. There's a whole lot of social stuff that they're working with them at. It's almost like they have to teach manners over and over again. But that's part of the job and they're doing a great job. Kind of like Dr. McGann was saying about the American Education Week. We want to also invite you to maybe partake in that with a, you know, token of kindness of some sort or actually just come into our classrooms and feel free to reach out and, you know, walk with the schools with us that week at some time. If you want to make an appointment or just, you know, stop and let Kim or Sheila or myself or Jason know that you want to come in and just kind of say hello to everybody. Feel free, greet people in the morning. We'd love that. So think about days, maybe that week, if, if something's available for you, we'd love to have you in. And it just doesn't have to be that week, of course. You feel free to come in as you need to.
What are the dates of that week?
It would be the 14th to the 18th, right?
Yeah.
Mentioned that PSAT testing was completed this week. I think we got everybody but two kids who were no shows. But for the most part, it worked very well. We released kids afterwards and it seemed to go okay. Grade distribution, our grades closed November 10th. Grades, the 17th will be distributed and that's an online alma thing. Middle high school will not be printing those out. So if you know anybody that has access or needs access to their alma account, we'd appreciate if they would contact the office. Elementary school will still be printing theirs out. There's a little bit more work in progress as they're transitioning from Common Core standards to like Dr. McGann was saying, the summer work that they did with the, with the Linwood competencies. So those look a little different, but they'll still be corrected and given to them. They can always do them online as well. As we move into next semester, yeah, like next semester, though, we won't be doing printouts anymore. They will be all online. And then the next board meeting, you'll know that the senior class will be coming to present their senior trip. And then just the only other thing is, we keep reminding kids, certain drivers, but what are my parents do that slow down? Other than that, that's kind of what we're doing.
What were the sirens today? Somebody.
The soccer, the soccer, yeah. The two teams that third board of 56, they won the Halloween Cup tournament. Why did victory so?
Nice.
Back-to-back tournament.
Yeah, exactly.
Sweet. Wrote some sirens.
That's where I was before this. Falcon.
I don't know.
There's also a facilities committee meeting this evening.
Your committee reports is up next. But like, before we move on, I just want to say, I would definitely take you up on your offer to walk or during that week.
Yeah, just give me, give us a call and we can, we can just prep people, like, you know, like if you walk into the building.
Let's see, then can I come in for lunch with the elementary kids? It was like that.
Yeah. Thank you. Committee reports, Fran. We touched on a few things that just to make sure we end up the year. Something that's been, we discussed within the process and we've been here for, you know, that it has with the intercom systems throughout the schools and the clock system. The clocks don't keep time good. Kind of do my mod. Like, I might wait to figure it out. But put together a few quotes. So, and it kind of, and one thing I did, wanted to be clear with Mark when he was here and everybody's that, this is kind of like, I think this process and it is. And so after discussing, one was a quote for finalize the intercom system that is necessary to be completed throughout the elementary as well as the sampling analog wireless clock system throughout the school and piggybacking on some that have already been installed in the, in the high school. The quotes come in a total of 21 and 5. As a board, we kind of felt that in discussing with, like, Mark and stuff that, uh, you know, it isn't necessary, let's just get it done, let the communication kind of go forward with this. So we're looking to next meeting. Attempt, we're gonna have a trust fund hearing, we're hoping, to release up to $24,000 from the equipment trust fund. That gives a little bit of flag, but the only stuff that sounds like it could be dicey is like if they find like a speaker that's bad or, or why, you know, it didn't sound like there's much extras. So it just gives us a little question, and, and taking that out of the equipment trust fund was our, was our hopes. If anybody has questions. No, about that. Does that sound good?
Is that, oh, that's just the intercom system?
Yeah, I can give you, sorry. Intercom and the box at the club, so everything, oh, so the intercom, we started before, and, and it was already done in the high school, and then we also bought radio systems, so we did that before. This is kind of like the final piece that will let everybody talk to each other.
The phone system.
In the phone system.
The ones that are in the classroom.
Yeah, yes. And so this kind of ties everything together. This system has a few extra, like bells and whistles where, like, both offices will be able to, like, chime in and communicate with the school as well as off-premise on the SAU, you could actually have distinction and talk to your room to anything. Or present a message from remotely. Pretty good. And then the clock system is just about getting the clocks all aligned, so that that's not an issue. And it's just a lot of equipment there too, but it didn't sound like anybody between Trey and the design company that pretty much most of our stuff is ready to go. You know, they might find, what we did it before. The only discussion was that Mark, uh, mentioned that there was like a couple of switches that, that needed to be replaced. So it doesn't sound like there's many things, but I just wanted to buffer it a little bit in case you find out that it is a speaker and speaker does it, but.
That makes sense.
It did come as a recommendation from, what is it, Homeland Security to, or that, those people.
Yeah, they discussed it in the past, and I don't, I'm not a teacher here, we have a teacher here that apparently it isn't the easiest system sometimes right now, but I, what I got.
I think it's exciting that both schools' clocks match.
Well.
And it won't be five minutes later here than it is down there.
And so that was kind of like.
Or vice versa.
I, I like seeing projects finished, and we, and it's very hard to do that here, so like, if this is what, $24,000 wraps up this whole thing. And now we can communicate, we can be tied in, and I look at it as, let's just get it done. Mark, um, his hope is that with this situation, that he'd be able to tie it in directly with getting it done around Christmas. So I told him I'm comfortable that it would get voted for, but I asked him to even reach out to the company now and say, hey, what is your availability? Because if we get it approved on the 16th, you know, he would like to try to squeeze it in when kids are on break, so.
Oh, nice, right.
And then if we come back after break, and that's just control.
Fantastic.
So there's that, that's good. Um, if anybody else has questions, that's, that's. Couple of quick things, the heating system update, uh, I'm sure people have heard of that some rooms are hot, some rooms are cold, and they have a few little hiccups. If you're familiar with heating systems, it's, they have a lot there in the system, you know, it was a giant system that was put in. Um, the company's coming up, they will blow off, rebalance the system. So they're just working that out. It's a lot of piping. It didn't sound like it was outrageous, so we, we even said like, a cold room is like not what I actually called, because I put heat out of my house. I was like, what? That's cold? But, uh, they're balanced, they're gonna come back for now and keep balancing it and blowing off air until the system is purged properly. And then, Mark, what was it? They're meeting next week or, I think, or Friday to get their training. So with the company. Operating the system.
And that is all, no extra charge for us? Right, it's all part of that section.
Yeah. Uh, so we did that, high school boiler system, still waiting on some information and we wanted to have a talk kind of next. So Mark wanted, was hoping that we'd be able to speak with the gentleman after he puts together some of the quote information. My feeling, we only have one meeting coming up this month, and then December turns into the same effect. He had, he had asked about bringing him in, you know, I think Kevin might have mentioned, maybe Zoom might be easier. I just don't want to bring a guy in, but we don't actually have details, but as soon as we get the package, Deb's gonna send it to all of us, I asked. So we can just kind of read in on some of the design aspects. And then for the next meeting, we can, at very least, have some questions that, you know, we need to answer, you know, give us a little bit. And I felt having everybody kind of, you know, like Jay and everybody, like that we would catch anything that we see as needing to deal with, because we really have only a couple of meetings to really make this happen, so. Where, if I, if we waited until that meeting to get the information, I felt like now all of a sudden we're in December, and then we're not seeing each other again till then. You know, if we get the information ahead of time, we can read it. I mean, most of it's gonna be not understandable for us. But if something sticks out, you know, like that, when, and then maybe we bring him in on Zoom that next meeting. So that's a thought, and then if anybody adds some questions. Maybe no one asks questions, and, you know, we just have him explain a few things and move on, but instead of having him come up here, which that sounds good.
If your timeframe isn't working, though, um, instead of scrambling for others, like, we can call a meeting with twenty-four hour notice.
Oh, no, no.
And it doesn't have to be at six o'clock at night, it could be at two thirty in the afternoon.
No, me, it's just that, but I think it's just, I didn't want to have the information get given to you on.
At the meeting.
Yeah, and, and having a person here. You know, we're trying to do it all at the same time.
Because this is, this is something we're trying to get in this coming budget. Right. So if we, if we start running, you know, if the information doesn't come in time, and then all of a sudden we're starting to have budget hearings, we can call an extra meeting.
Oh, yes, no, and that's understandable. And, but that's why I just thought, if, if they can get it to us, because it's not until the 16th, I mean, that's three weeks from now, almost. You know, if it comes in next week, send us our packet.
Gotcha.
You know, let us thumb through it, and then it's worthwhile having that guy, you know, zoom in, and maybe we don't get all in, but that might lead to us having questions down the road. I just didn't want to get it all that day.
Gotcha.
And try to be like I just felt like, anyway.
Is the issue just, this is a question for Deb, I guess, is the issue, we got the SFR funds that need to be used in the next cycle?
Yeah, I mean, some of them have to be used by September twenty twenty-three. And some of them, the rest of them by September twenty twenty-four.
So do we have, um, do we have a backup plan in the event that, you know, in the event that detectives decide that they don't want to vote for the additional funds to do that system?
If it doesn't pass this year, we do have one more chance, because we have until September twenty twenty-four. Most of the money that, for September twenty twenty-three, and I will have to go back and run that, but I'm taking as much money out of the stuff that expires in twenty twenty-three, because we had, you know, we had some other projects going on with that money, the learning loss.
Yeah.
Pieces, also, all of the engineering needs are coming out of that. So yeah, I mean, we have, we, we might need to get creative with other funding sources as much as we can, whether we use trust funds. I, I was thinking today, maybe we can use some of that unassigned
fund balance.
Fund balance there, the, um, emergency money. I don't know if we could, because we don't want to lose this grant money. So, and until we have an estimate, or we're guessing, we're gonna need additional funds, probably through a bond. So, yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, I just would hate to see, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars we're talking about.
Right.
That if, if, if this falls through, and we don't have some other, something that, you know, as a backup for, to use those funds that we're.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we will have to, yeah, because we don't want to lose this money.
So is that so, just you. Then the only other project that, um, as a facilities committee, we're proposing this year to go to, why would be flooring? Keeping up with what we've been doing. They looked at a little map of it, uh, then speaking with, this proven out and stuff, kind of honed in on a zone that met our, like, money number, which I'm going in at a hundred and fifteen thousand. And pick the most, like, vulnerable locations, so.
How many phases is left at that?
That, so if we did that, the following year for middle high school, for the middle school, we would be complete at less, about the same, call it another hundred fifteen, which keeps us.
Two more years of flooring and we're done.
Well, no, then we gotta go to another school, but, yeah, all right. For him, if we kept it at the same rate we, we bet, which is hundred to hundred fifty, we're four years away from completion.
Four, okay. Cool. That's good news.
Uh, two more here and two more. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And what is it, most of the classrooms here, so that's what we chose, so like, look at more, I give you a little map. But, um, you know, we, we here, that, in, in this area is the math wing, the middle school wing, and music and home ec. Middle school, apparently that wing is, is, was in the cumulative most disrepair, because there is some other rooms that sound like they, they need help, but as far as the zone goes, and then that about equates to half of the amount of square foot.
That's good news. That's awesome.
You know, so I think going with their recommendation of picking, you know, I kind of broke it off into two options, or like, if we looked at it as doing the minus, you look at one option, if you mix up, like, say, math wing and music, you're at forty-seven hundred square feet at a hundred and nine thousand, or if you just pick that middle school wing, you're at four to six hundred square feet. And they're coming in at about the same amount, so. Yeah, get that part done. Apparently, people like the materiality.
Yes, it's, I mean, you know, I, I had, when I was in middle school, the first room, got it. And I, and I appreciate it, Deb, but man, having taught on that carpet that was in the humanities wing for the last five years. I was not, sorry to see that gone. That, that was not a good material, the floor, right?
Right, right.
Uh, but what they've got in there is fantastic.
Yeah, so that puts us in a good spot, and I, and I think with the other, you know, with, we've discussed, like, with the big eating projects and stuff, is, is kind of just keeping it simple. One war in our throes for the flooring, we've been on pace with it, we've been moving forward with it.
Was the music room included in that? Because on the map, it's red.
Anything that was in that color.
Was it put?
Music.
Red.
Okay.
And then middle school wing.
No, not music.
Because he had the music room in red as well.
Well, on this one, music room's purple.
What's the red beside it?
Oh, that.
That's home ec.
Oh, that's home ec.
Well, that's like orange.
Okay.
One nineteen?
Yeah, that's one show.
That's orange.
I know, but it looks like the same color, being with my glasses and my belt.
Well, I was really off because the other one was purple.
No, I was thinking that was the beauty.
We need a better notation. That's it, that's the thing, Kevin, if you don't want to add anything besides colors.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Policies, yeah, is there any other committees before we jump into that, though? We said.
No, I think most of the committee.
Okay. So, uh, policy committee.
Wait, yeah, CIP. Sorry. Yes, I, I got that, I got your, your sign like that there. We, I met with Deb and Mark, just to try to get more dates and figures and stuff to put in, so we're working on that. Mark's got a lot of quotes and figures that he gathered. Deb came up with a lot of dates of when things were originally, the group was put on, the floor was put in, stuff like that. So that we can know when we need to start funding that, and we've got to, you know, figure out some parameters, how much, do we, like, do we want, if it's five thousand, we'll put in the CIP, if it's fifteen hundred, we'll put it in the CIP and save five hundred a year or three years, how do we want to do that? So we're just trying to get all the numbers and figures together, so that we can get that done and then, and then feel. But we didn't mean, we're not working on it. I hate that so, it's pretty, just saying.
Something we should get Cheryl Reardon on.
Yeah, no kidding, I agree, a hundred percent. And that was that, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. That's it, it sounds like there's a lot to put. All right, so pol- policies, we got quite a bit of stuff tonight. You want to you have anything preliminarily?
A couple of things that I just wanted to point out. For Sharon, I H B A B. Thank you for putting in the I, words for IEP, but it's, um, individual education plan, not program. Other than that, it's perfect. And it was probably my, you know, fucking, inherently on the recording that got you there. The other ones were just, the, um, B G D, let me find it here. Yeah, because I missed that. So what the heck? Yes, I didn't, I, I, my question was, and we didn't make a decision on this one, or the other, we wanted to give it to the full board, is, why are we taking out that line? That first line, it didn't make sense to me, why we wouldn't just leave it there. It was, uh, on the recommendation of the school boards, the, um, the Hampshire School Board Association policies, but I don't see any reason that we should take it out. I mean, we don't have it.
You don't remember which one that was?
Yeah. B G D.
Yeah. In which case, it doesn't have to change at all.
It doesn't have to change.
That was just what was recommended by the
Right.
School Boards Association to match what their policy was.
But I think it was, it's good policy to have a superintendent, where the advice appropriate staff shall develop administrative procedures to implement and adopt policies. We do that anyway. I mean, it just made sense to me to leave it, it's, but I didn't want to make that decision at the policy committee level without the rest of the boards.
It seems like it'd be advice and appropriate staff is the.
Which we do.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess my, what I'm saying is that that seems to be the gray area. Of that's, of that sentence.
What do you mean?
Advice of the appropriate staff.
Right. Well, it depends on who the policy is with. If it's a policy about, um, PE class, you consult the PE teacher. If it's a policy.
Yeah, but is that the only person, right? There's somebody outside of PE classes could be considered themselves, you know, in, involved in that.
If it's a, if it's a policy about special education, you consult special education department, not the math department, you know what I mean?
No, no, I agree with that.
Have appropriate staff.
I'm just saying, like, who, who deems who's appropriate.
Superintendent.
So that goes out, these policies go up to all of the staff right at the very beginning when we do.
Right.
All staff members get it, and then they get, it goes through the process, and then at the end, we pass a copy of these policies up to everyone.
I, I understand that. I'm, I'm saying that the, the term appropriate can be misinterpreted based on who is reading this, right? If there's a and I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just, it looks to me in reading this, that is the, the gray area, and maybe the reason for the.
I see what you're saying, so we'll take that word out, take out the word appropriate, leave the rest.
And I wonder.
Sorry, it took me a long time to get to what you were going to say.
Yeah.
But, you can do that. Is it, do you like that better?
I feel like it should be the superintendent shall develop, develop administrative procedures and implement adopted policy, policies. And then it would be the superintendent's decision to consult those.
Gotcha.
Those people. They, they deem appropriate.
But then that goes against false, if it's not in there. What do you mean? Like, if you take out with appropriate staff and just say superintendent, then if they go against the policy and ask staff for input.
Well, yeah, and, and that's why we got, like, the word advice too, right? Well, you know, one staff's advice might be to do this, and the superintendent goes the opposite way. Well, that you're not using the advice of the appropriate staff when you consulted.
How about input? The input of staff? Or staff input?
Or maybe like.
Staff input.
Considering staff input? Considering staff input, also considering staff.
Can I, can I ask a question to you, Judy? When it comes to developing the policies and stuff, our policy has been including, or procedure, sorry. Our, our policy regarding that has always included the language of would the advice appropriate staff, right, that's what it used to be. Yeah, I, has it ever been an issue where somebody has demanded to be a, a part of something that you didn't think that they should have been, or somebody refused to be a, a, a part of developing a procedure?
I don't think so, because the staff usually sees that, you know, they need to, want to give input, it's not an issue, we haven't had that issue.
So, as far as like, as far as that like clause becoming an actual problem, it's something that you
I'd like to move and leave it in.
So, I, I mean, I guess, we would I wouldn't be making an official motion, right? I guess it's just part of the
No, Sharon would just edit it, and then when we come back to second reading, we can prove it or not.
Right, as far as like, moving it on to second reading, with or without the change?
Correct.
I guess we can do just sort of an informal straw poll about how we would like that.
If, I don't think it needs to even be moved, if we're not making any changes, because it's going to revert back to the, the original policy.
Oh, that, oh, right, because that's the original.
So it just doesn't need to be moved forward, and it stays as it is.
And then it would just be notated that it was reviewed.
And it was viewed on the state as opposed to revised.
Gotcha.
Well, I guess there's a, a motion to leave it as it's, that's what. Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor? If you can probably say aye. And those opposed? And those abstaining? And that carries, so that will be
So this is taking out the list?
Taking out the list.
With a notation that says, review. Um, okay, the next one, C C A, Administrative Success Plan, I don't really like this policy at all, honestly. I don't, it limits us and, and really ties the hands of the district for success plans. This district experienced something like this when Judy was out, and we, it worked fine, it worked well, it worked for us. This policy would have prevented us from doing that.
Okay, what, what one is that one again?
The Administrative Succession Plan. C C A, yeah. I just, I don't think we should adopt this policy at all, and again, this was just another one that was, that's in the in the, that we don't, it's in the, the Hampshire School Board Association's policy packet that we can adopt or not. And Sharon was also noticing, we didn't have a subarticle to see if we did want it.
I would say that we need something in place, because ad hoc, you know, sort of addressing it's either an emergency vacancy or even a planned vacancy in a sort of an ad hoc manner is not going to be our, I, I don't think it's going to be our best plan. I think we, I don't know that this policy is necessarily the best way to go about it, this is basically just telling us to develop a succession plan, this isn't
And the, and the reason why, not to interrupt you, but the reason why that, that went well the last time, that went smoothly, was because there is a plan. Because we have to have a plan for the state. So, you know, when something like that happens, you automatically call the state, we automatically have somebody in place that could
Yeah.
take on that role.
And my, I mean, my, my interpretation of this policy is not to actually make, it's not, this is not the succession plan, this is just directing us to come up with something.
Right.
So that
That we already have.
We have an, we have an emergency plan, right? And, and that's just sort of the fallback baseline thing that, that everybody has, but we don't have those, I, I don't, at least I don't think, is a succession plan for planned administrative absence, so if we have, you know, for example, if Judy decides to retire, you know, what, what, what do we do at that point? And, you know, what's, what's the plan going forward? Are we going to have her stay on and help train the new person?
So we have a plan for hiring a superintendent. We have a policy for that already. I mean, everything that this wants us to do, we have, the, the one thing I didn't like about this, one of the things I didn't like about this, and I can't find it now, is the media, the official spokesperson representing the S U in all media contacts, you know, will, it, it's, it's, there's a, a media announcement that I don't, I mean, depending on the situation, I don't want to have to do that, do you know what I mean? It's, there's, there's a lot of this that, we, and we already have, everything this wants us to have, without tying our hands to specific things.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't read this as being terribly specific. And it's more or less just like, develop, develop, develop a plan.
We have them.
Can we, can we get, I guess before we act on this, can we get what is in place? So we can look to see if it's sufficient. Yeah, because I, I, I mean, frankly, I don't know, you've been with the board as long as I've been on the board, so I don't know what that, that plan looks like, and so maybe it would be helpful for everybody on the board to sort of have an idea of what, what happens when you say at the end of next year, you know, this is my last year, what do we, you know, what sort of things are, are, you know, how are we supposed to handle that, I guess?
Right, right. Can you talk about the next policy?
Yeah, and I think that that goes for all sorts of senior administration.
Yeah, all they have.
Business administrator, and the, you have the student services, and principals, and we have a, something in place that
So any of the policies that cover all the stuff that's in here will bring together the next policy.
Yeah, so why don't we put, leave this on for first?
Yeah.
And bring in the other policies. Is everyone okay with that?
That was all that I wanted to go over, and I don't think we have anything else in the policies. We changed a couple of little things, but nothing huge. I like the additions you put in with the dress code too, that was
That was the biggest change.
Yeah, yeah. I like the wording.
I was looking at, um, V C A, the Crisis Convention and Emergency Response Plans. There's a line in there that says, in, in brackets, insert other provisions if the board wishes to plan, you know, just to sort of remove that, V C A.
Oh, yeah.
The subsection B, it basically just, it just is like a placeholder in case there's other things we want to add.
I was supposed to ask you all if you wanted anything out of it.
Well, Tim brings up the, I guess the student dress code policy, I'll look at comment on that.
Which, which one is it, what's the word?
The student dress code policy, J I C.
Yep, got it.
Change to the wording, it's like the no no in a nutshell, it includes, I My opinion is that is very like casual language for, for a policy, and I know policy has struck from the top, but in my opinion, that could be summarized differently to say, you know, insumations are include but are not limited to.
Can I just sum up, we, that was one years and years and years ago, and it was very formal, and then when the no no's in a nutshell put on, the kids reacted to that very well, they paid more attention to it, and, and I think that's why that was left in there, because it, you know, the kids related to it. Even though, you're right, it's a formal policy, it should, but the kids reading it really reacted to that better. Remember that one? My kids went to school.
And this is like the, the policy that gets quoted in the panels.
Yes, exactly, this is the ones the kids look at.
Yeah.
This is the policy.
There's plenty of others, I think, students' purpose policies here that could be more relaxed, they, they understand it, but we don't but we don't do that for the Again, I, I understand if there's a, you know, a poster in the office that says, no, no no's in a nutshell, like, you know, this is what we don't do, but like when you're writing policy, it, it just doesn't read to me as
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, it's just I know that that was put in there years ago, because the kids really reacted to it better, and there were less issues once we spoke to them that way, then
We can pull that one over, you know?
I don't think it either way, it's, you're still going to have the kids, they're going to carry the dress code policy around their back pocket, say, oh, no, no, show me where it says that. Yeah, they, they do, I, I had one like that, so. No, she's not aware, but it is. So, keep it on there, but maybe you can look at the wording on that for a second, we sort it out.
So, why don't we move to second, everything that, there, and then we can talk about the one that's actually being approved.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move, um, policy E V C A, E V C D, I C, I H B A A, I H B A B, I H B A C, I H B A M, J I C A, J J A dash R, K F A, K D A, B G D, C C A, C C B, C H B, D D, D G D, D I H, D J D, D J G, to second meeting.
If I can make a, just a small change to that, you listed B G D, which is the one we're not actually doing, which is the
Thank you for that.
So with that, with that
Amendments.
Amendments.
Some of them.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Tim, thank you, Joe, any further discussion on that? Uh, all those in favor, if I was saying aye. Close, exceptions, and motion carries. And then, uh, the only one that's going, that's on for second reading for full approval this evening is the dress code policy, uh, E H A B. This one seems to be one that we review every year, because they change it every year.
And that's the one that had been, you did, you've gotten it at your last three meetings, I had just forgotten to put it on the list. So we moved it to first, second meeting.
Is there any discussion about that?
I make a motion to move E H A B.
Second, sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, exceptions, and motion carries. I think that covers any other committees?
No, the committees, no.
Any nominations, recommendations, reservations?
Not at this time.
And in new business, we have public gift.
Yeah, that one, we're still waiting for that letter of intent, so I'll be getting that for the next meeting, it wasn't ready, so we'll just do it for next. Yeah, there haven't been any changes, so maintaining.
We asked about our, I guess our goal setting
Yeah.
from something to go, and we're waiting for a full board.
So we do need to schedule another time to do that, because we didn't you know, we, we had a pretty robust discussion, but didn't make it terribly far with the actual goal setting part of it, so I think it seems like most folks on the board were in favor of more specific
Yeah.
and measurable goals. But we just really have much of an opportunity to identify them, and we want to have more. What, so we have a meeting, we have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, right?
Yes.
So I, I guess I would suggest we put it on in the best, sort of, some of the time slot after the meeting for November, provided that we don't have too much other stuff on the agenda that night, and we can get through at a reasonable hour, if it's sort of
So move that after the December meeting?
November.
November meeting, gotcha, okay.
We're going to get some examples from the other schools, or other boards, or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I, I gathered some, just to give you guys an idea, so
Excellent.
And, uh, I don't see any students, we're going to staff.
Did you, have you had a discussion with Lincoln Police Chief about an S R O at all?
Um, I've had a slight discussion, yes.
Like, we have not Nothing that we're pulling yet. Okay.
We had set up a meeting, but the meeting was canceled.
Oh, gotcha.
To reschedule, so that will happen, and then we'll come to it.
I know that there was a grant involved at all, I'm just trying to think of the deadline for the acceptance of the grant.
No, it's still going to be in within the, we'll be in within the grant, well, the deadline for the grant, because we, I already talked about it.
Oh, good, okay, that's what I was worried about.
Yeah, 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 we'll watch on the deadline.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you, sorry.
Anything else? We have
Hi. So I do have one thing that was that, I was asked to pass along, along, Dana Tampolin asked to, need to tell you that kindergarten classes tried something new this year, we did a program called ABC Boot Camp, to teach letters and sounds covering twenty six letters in twenty six days. Kids did an amazing job, and their knowledge of letters and sounds has grown immensely, we invited parents and families to come in last week and see an ABC fashion show, where the kids showcased their homemade vests covered in pictures and items that began their special letters, and she, she had that picture for you guys.
And I just want to comment, a shout out to the staff, there's twenty six letters now, but there's only sixteen kindergartners, so there was a lot of staff members that put on that did their fashion show and spun around, and so, yeah, it was, that was awesome.
Beyond that, I was involved in P S A testing this week, proctoring it, and I have to say, that is not an easy endeavor to manage, and we have a brand new vice counselor in that, who did extremely well for having come on board, what, three weeks, four, a month ago, I can't remember exactly. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board, that he did a really good job in very difficult circumstances, and we got through it very swiftly.
Well, that reminds me, actually, I had a question for you on that, do you, you know when we expect the results of that?
I don't remember, I don't think they're back there until like March for the
Oh, the S A Ts?
Yeah, it's later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe February, March?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, they don't come back very quickly, and, and he did those paper pencils, so
Slow drain.
That's what I, thank you. And communities.
Nice to see, couple of weekends, yeah.
Anyone over there? No? Tony Drappo, for those of you that don't know me, from Lincoln, in regards to agenda item number four, communication correspondence, I sent to a request, or my wife, my daughter and I sent a request to seek an audience for the board a week ago, by email and as well as a letter in accordance with policy K E, at the time sensitive matter in our regard, we have not heard any communication back, so we don't know getting that on yet or not. Yes, and I apologize if you didn't get correspondence back on that. It was the, our intent that, to have to do that in non-public after next meeting.
Okay, well, you know, we weren't going to be presumptuous about that.
Yeah.
You came here just to see if the correspondence had been received, our daughter wanted to be here to speak as well, we didn't bring her because of that, maybe we weren't speaking, but if you're great, then the meeting will accept it.
Well, if you prefer, we can do it another night.
It, it can't happen after. It can't, it's a time sensitive thing, you don't use any time.
So, so, the plan was, we have, I think, one other issue needs to be addressed in non-public, and then, we were actually, I think we were going to do your spot first, and then the other issue, and then for the public cameras. So I think that we'll be pulling the board into non-public right now, because they're only using everything on the agenda. Joe?
Yes.
Yep.
And, yeah, me, Kevin, yes, right?
Yes.
All right, we are in non-public.